Item two on the agenda is the approval of agenda and consent agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chilton.
Present.
Parker has an excuse.
She has an excused absent for this meeting.
Hutchings.
Here.
Ruffridge.
Here.
Hugarte.
Here.
Carey. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is the approval of agenda and consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as presented.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting minutes. New business ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty-one fifteen approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital budget and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in the general fund and four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in the small capital project fund introduced by the city manager public hearing on August eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance twenty twenty-one sixteen increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by two thousand two hundred dollars in the general fund for a donation received from the Soldatna Library Friends introduced by the city manager public hearing on August eleventh, twenty twenty-one. New business resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-three authorizing the city manager to apply for a loan and execute loan documents with the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation from the Alaska Drinking Water Fund in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Soldatna Water Rate Study Project introduced by the city manager. Resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-four authorizing the city manager to apply for a loan and execute loan documents with the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation from the Alaska Clean Water Fund in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Soldatna Waste Water Rate Study Project introduced by the city manager. And that is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Seeing none, the approval and consent, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Any comments? Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Item four on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes aggregate. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five on the agenda, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to item six, Public Hearings. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one four amending Soldatna Municipal Code four point one two point zero four zero, Determination of Eligibility of Candidate to Identify How a Candidate's Eligibility is Determined and Provide a Process for Qualified Voters of the City to Question the Eligibility of a Candidate, introduced by the city clerk. May I have a motion to enact?
I'll make a motion to enact ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one five.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings.
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Oh, one four, I believe.
I'm one four, you're right.
Report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This ordinance would update the city code and mirror state statute related to how a person establishes residency, which is one of our requirements for being a candidate for council. It also updates and codifies the process I've used to verify that a candidate is eligible and outlines that I will use public records resources available to me for that and also establishes a process where an eligible voter of the city can challenge a candidate's eligibility if they happen to believe they're not actually eligible. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Now, the public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Hugarte?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The ordinance passes on a five oh vote. Moving on to the next agenda, there is nothing under item seven, new business. It's already been on the consent agenda. Oh, excuse me, we'll have item C under new business, COVID nineteen update and discussion, report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. We, I wanted to place this item before the council on the agenda for just an update and a discussion. We haven't had an update on the case rates, vaccination rates, et cetera, about COVID in some time. And honestly, it hadn't been something that I'd been tracking closely for the last two months because if you remember back in May, our case rates were declining, they were very low, vaccinations were still happening, and a lot of people were getting vaccinated. And at that point, the CDC issued some guidance, really relaxing some of their recommendations about mask wearing and such. More recently, really for the past several weeks, we've seen case rates start to increase. And so really, those trends have been reversed. We've also seen vaccinations, new vaccinations, kind of taper off. So we're fairly steady in terms of the coverage of vaccination in our community. And I've been now spending kind of the last week getting caught up to speed on what's going on in the community, really for two purposes. One, so that I can take a look at our employee personnel policy and make sure that we're still taking appropriate steps with our employees to keep the workplace safe. So we have a fairly robust personnel policy. We updated as needed. And earlier today, I shared with you an email that I sent out to employees, just reminding them of key pieces of that policy that are important, really, so we can keep COVID spread out of the workplace. But the other reason is to bring forward and potentially get some feedback from council about whether the council's going to want to be making decisions relative to our, the public's use of our facilities, knowing that we can't make those decisions tonight. But really, I wanted to just get a sense from the council as to whether there's an expectation that we'll be kind of tracking some of these alert levels, bringing forward for you decisions in the upcoming months about, for example, the public's use of our facilities, whether masks will be required, whether large events are going to continue as planned. Really, for those type of decisions, I'm going to entirely defer to the council to make those decisions. But as the staff, we're happy to provide as much information as is needed. Let me take a step back and give you just some of the numbers. Currently, we're, for the last, I think, three weeks, our area is in the high transmission in terms of case rates. So the state looks at the average daily rate over the last fourteen days, and the Kenai Peninsula Borough is now in the high alert level, meaning we have more than ten per hundred thousand. We're actually at thirty-seven per hundred thousand as of the report that came out just an hour ago. So we're almost four times that limit, and that's consistent with most of the areas in the state right now. It's also true of the state as a whole and even at the more local level. If you were just to look at the Central Peninsula, we're still at the high level. The CDC has some other metrics that they track, but using their metrics, whether it's new COVID cases over the last seven days or looking at the percentage of positive tests that come back, either of those metrics would also qualify us as being in the highest alert level. So that tells us that there's just a lot of the virus in the community right now, and I'm sure you may know this anecdotally from folks that you know that may be suffering from that. Another thing that we think about in terms of overall risk in the community is vaccination coverage. The peninsula currently ranks tenth out of eleven of the statewide regions in terms of fully vaccinated rates amongst adults. And if you break down the data even a little bit more locally, we've found that Soldatna kind of lags really even behind Seward, Homer, some of the other areas of the peninsula. So the best data that we have shows the Soldatna area, which is bigger than the city, it's about sixteen thousand people. It shows the current vaccination rate for the Soldatna area of people who are fully vaccinated at about thirty-two point two percent. That number's stayed almost the same really over the last three weeks. In fact, I wrote the memo to employees, realized I was using data from three weeks ago, updated the new data, almost no change. So it's, vaccinations are still happening, and we are tremendously grateful for the support and the people that are doing that. It's just not changing really enough vaccinations to move the needle in terms of overall percentage of the population. So overall, our vaccination coverage in the community is lower than the state, lower than the borough, and probably lower than we'd want it to be in terms of slowing down the spread. Yesterday, the CDC issued some new guidance related to masking, and I think it's partially in response to the Delta variant, and maybe I'm going to defer to Councilmember Ruffridge if there are questions about that or how that's maybe shifted what we're seeing from a couple of months ago, the prevalence of that strain of the variant. But I will review that, that new guidance. I haven't implemented any changes to our personnel policy yet, but it's something that I'm just looking, it just came out yesterday along with some other information from the CDC. One of the things they shared yesterday that I thought was helpful is really guidance to communities or organizations. If you wanted to think about how to assess the risk in your community and apply a layered preventative strategy that is in response to your local context, they provided some new guidance on how you might think of that. So in addition to the case rates, they identified several other factors that a community might consider. One is vaccination coverage, as I just talked about. One is healthcare capacity, keeping an eye on the capacity of your local hospital or healthcare infrastructure, also looking at the capacity to detect early changes in case rates and how that's moving. And then the fifth was looking at populations that might be particularly at risk in your community. So this was helpful for me to think about. For example, if the council did envision yourself wanting to make decisions about the use of our facilities that were responsive to changes in the community, this might provide a helpful framework for us to be able to bring forward and offer some suggestions on how we might go about tracking that. I think the last thing I'll point out is that, as I reiterated to our staff, there are many things that we know to do now that are proven to be very effective, and they're the things we've been talking about really for the last year, but wearing a mask consistently is effective, social distancing and improving ventilation, taking things outdoors is effective at reducing the risk, good hygiene and hand washing. And so these are all the same things that I'm going to be reminding our own employees about to be thoughtful, especially in times like we're in now where there just seems to be quite a bit more of the virus that's moving around our community. So with that, I think I'll pause. Again, just wanted to have this for questions and discussions and in general, get some feedback on the council about maybe your expectations of us moving into these next few months. Thank you, Mayor Whitney.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have concern for everyone, but I especially have concern for the city employees. And so I'd just start with public safety who has to go out and be around people. What are we doing to provide them as safe an environment as possible? That's not the good terminology, but what are we doing for them?
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. One thing that I've done up to this point is just encourage vaccination among our employees. The city will provide every city employee up to twenty-four hours of leave for the purpose of getting a vaccine and then potentially recovering from the side effects. You know, some people need a couple of days to really feel themselves again. So we're providing leave for folks who want to do that. Certainly, we still are able to acquire any of the PPE that folks need. So we just today ordered some large stockpiles of masks. If folks want, we provide masks to any employees. Back in the beginning of the pandemic, you know, in March, April, May of last year, we actually took steps to kind of address our operations and physically limit the contact with the public. We haven't, we haven't implemented something like that really since the very beginning. But if it was ever to be a problem, that's something we could look at. How do we scale back our operations, really only dealing with the most critical services we provide? Again, that was something that only came to play really in the very beginning. Since then, we felt comfortable that we had the protections that people needed to be able to work safely.
I'm sure you've thought about it, so I want to go the next step, and that would be mandating, would you want the council to provide decisions that city workers would have to be vaccinated?
Thank you for the question. I think I would consult with, you know, our HR manager, our attorney, but likely that would be a personnel decision that would fall within my purview to make. It's not something I'm considering at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate all you are doing very much.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the administration, what incentives have we, have we made available to employees to kind of encourage them to go get the vaccine rather than taking the stick approach?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. We have not provided specific incentives for employees for that purpose. We did really communicate well the incentives that were available earlier this year in the park event when Doctors Inc. came to town and the Chamber was partnering with many local providers to do some fun raffles and things. I made sure that all of our employees knew about that. In terms of our own employees, it's not something that we have implemented. I have been doing some research about it recently. The EEOC recently issued some guidance on how programs like that voluntary incentive type programs, how they align with ADA law, anti-discrimination law. So it's possible. Really, at this point, I'm kind of collecting thoughts from supervisors as to what we think might be the most effective in encouraging folks to get vaccinated if they can.
I would much rather see us as a carrot than a stick whenever possible to encourage a higher vaccination rate among our employee base. And I'm aware that there's a number of organizations, RNC, that have had their own incentive programs implemented to kind of boost those numbers. Some of them are just straight cash bonuses. One idea that I had that I thought might potentially work well here would be, let's give our employees a day off. They get the vaccine, have one day of PTO, and I wouldn't want to discriminate against those that have already got the vaccine, so maybe make that retroactive. But I'd be curious to see what the numbers on that would be financially to make that happen, but something I would support.
I would like to ask, what percentage of our employees are vaccinated?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Hutchings. We don't know. I don't have that information because we haven't yet asked employees. I think folks, some folks have a general sense just from conversations they've had within different departments. I will say that I believe it's pretty disparate in terms of different departments. There are some facilities we have where the vaccine coverage is pretty high, and I think there are some other departments where I would expect it to be much lower. So it's not consistent among the departments. But because we have not formally asked employees to share that information with us, I don't have more specific information to go on other than just the community-wide numbers that we hear reported.
If I may expand. I'm sorry.
The question, when Mr. Chilton said he would do is like give incentives, but what about the other people that don't feel like getting the vaccine? They would feel left out. I'm thinking we would start creating more problems for us by trying to do that instead of just letting people decide for themselves, just like my opinion, just from people that I've talked to, you know? I go out to Fred Myers when I go out shopping to my wife, and I go around and I speak to a lot of people. I just go around there and I get lost and I go and speak to them, and there's a lot of people that are not for it, and there's a lot of people that are, and there's a lot of people that are, it should be each one's individual choice. So just what I've, what I've talked to other people and what people have told me. Thank you. Mr. Chilton is next.
Mr. Chilton, you had a follow-up?
Starting to call my train of thought on that one. I believe previously when our high-risk last winter, we did have that mask mandate in place for employees. And when we transitioned out of that, the guidance was for employees that were not vaccinated, they were strongly encouraged to wear masks. Do we have any legal means to actually get hard data on which employees are vaccinated, which aren't? And following up on that, could we require mask use for employees that are not vaccinated? If things get bad enough, I don't know if we're quite there yet, but that would be something to consider if it, if the risk status warrants that level of action in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. So absolutely, I have the ability to require employees to wear masks at work. Previously, I had not been in favor of a policy that differentiated based on a person's vaccination status. So what I did instead was wait, because we had previously required employees to wear masks when they were indoors, when social distancing couldn't be achieved. Earlier this year, many employees had become vaccinated, I was aware of that, but my preference was not to have two separate parallel policies for employees. So instead, what I did was wait until we got to a point, and for us, it was in May, when I felt like we could really lift that requirement, instead move towards the CDC language. So yes, if we got to a point where I felt like it was necessary for employees to do it again, we could absolutely require it. My thinking is probably the same, at least right now, that it makes sense, specifically with the new guidance that came out from the CDC, they're now requiring even fully vaccinated people to wear masks indoors. So I don't know that any policy, if we were to implement that again, would differentiate. And really, I think the purpose of the council's engagement today, I was hoping, is more outward towards the public's attendance in our facilities. We've got a great team of our HR manager and my assistant. We spend a lot of time thinking about these personnel decisions. What we don't do, what I think is more squarely in your lane as the council, is decisions about if the public will be asked to do different things when they enter our facilities, whether it's wearing masks at the library, whether we're going to continue booking large events at the sports center. Those, to me, I think we engaged with the council quite a bit over the last year, and it feels appropriate that if there's an expectation that we'd be doing similar things, then I could maybe start that conversation, get that feedback from the council as well.
Any other question, Mr. Ruffridge?
Mayor, I guess to that end, for the city manager and for us to think through, I get the sense that for the most part, I feel like our guidance from the council and from the administration throughout the COVID pandemic has been consistently to try to model CDC guidance and language from those people who make disease control their livelihood and their main mission. I don't think that we need to necessarily reinvent the wheel, so to speak, but maybe start making some version of planning that corresponds with CDC guidance. I understand the large amount of frustration, I feel it myself regarding sort of being back in a place after a few months of feeling like we were headed in a different direction. And it's uncertain at this moment which, how this, how this turns out. Is it a brief, a brief spike and then we return back to some sort of baseline? Do we keep going up? Is there a fifth wave somewhere down the road? And I think it's important to understand that we've definitely shifted into a different phase, and even though we're at a high-risk category now, is different than it was before. And the CDC is coming out with guidance that I think is fair and reasonable. I think it's also reasonable for our administration to prioritize looking at that guidance and seeing how that fits within our public spaces, which is what the CDC guidance sort of asks us to do, and then to not differentiate based on the vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I'm hearing a bunch of things, Councilmember Hugarte and Councilmember Chilton were sort of kind of touching on this topic about privacy, concerns about patient choice or people choice. And I have those concerns as well. I think your decision to be vaccinated is a healthcare decision and does require some privacy, and you should have the choice to decide, and you should decide that with your healthcare provider. And I think our language about making this, this spike a problem of the unvaccinated potentially creates an us versus them mentality. Our CDC guidance that came out, and I had the opportunity to read that this afternoon, sort of just says, hey, listen, if you're in high-risk territory, I think, we think it's wise to consider some safety measures indoors when gathering. On its face, that's a reasonable thing to do, considering what we all just lived through for the last eighteen months. It's frustrating. I don't want to wear a mask. I'll be publicly on the record for saying so, but I would, I would wear one if that is what would help our community continue to, you know, face the pandemic in a responsible and reasonable fashion and follow along with guidance that is, that is created to ensure that we don't find ourselves back in a position where hospitals are struggling to maintain and healthcare providers are burnt out, stressed out, and feeling like they are not able to do their best work. Feel like I threw a lot of thoughts out there. I'll quit now. Thank you.
Any other council comments? I have just one, basically, I can see us requiring employees to wear masks during working hours because we need to protect our employees and make sure they stay safe. Vaccinations, that's a personal choice. I urge people to get the vaccination, but that's up to them. We can't force anybody, and I don't think we should ever get into that position where we have to force somebody to get, do something they don't want to do. As far as requiring mask wearing for the general public coming in, there again, I think it should be their choice. We're here to protect our employees at this point in time, and I think that's what we should do, require mask wearing during working hours. I'm not too sure about separation right now as far as like the seating in here. I think we'd take some suggestions from the administration on that. I really don't want to go back to Zoom meetings. I think the public needs to be present to see us in action and what we're doing, and they can watch us on the video feed if they don't want to attend the meeting. But I'm not sure the Zoom meetings are something that we need to be considering at this time. So I guess we need to give the administration some direction. I think if our direction is to be to have the employees wear the masks during working hours, then we should go that route. If there's any other suggestions from anyone, let's go for it and direct the administration to do so. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question to administration, if we, if that was the reality, would employees working outside have to have a mask?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. No, our current policy does not require employees to wear masks when working outdoors. And I don't believe, what I've read from the recent CDC guidance, that that would be impacted by what they announced yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
Just want to follow up for me. You referenced earlier, there's some additional guidance that came out from the CDC that might provide a more robust framework for gauging your community response. Would that framework be adequate in your mind to let you implement or repeal this as risk levels adjust in our community? That way, we don't necessarily have to have you coming back to the council every time we want to put in place or repeal the mask mandate for our employees? Because if that's adequate, I would trust your judgment on when to implement based on that framework.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. I mean, again, specifically, I believe it's really my choice to implement mandates for employees. That falls within my responsibilities as directing our staff, directing our operations. So really, I would see that framework potentially being used by the council as a way to track risk levels and then make other decisions such as, are we, are we limiting? And I'm going to reference decisions from last year, not that I am recommending we do this, but decisions like, are we limiting the attendance at the sports center? Are we canceling some large event room rentals? Are we requiring the public to wear masks at the sports center or the library? Those are the types of kind of community-wide decisions that I feel are best made by the council. Any decisions related to our staff, our safety, I'm going to retain kind of sole exclusive rights to make those decisions as needed, though I welcome, certainly welcome your input and certainly your support for doing what we need to do to keep folks safe.
Any other comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
Yeah, and just to be clear, I have the summary of the recent changes from the CDC. They're relatively short. The recommendation from the CDC is for all people, including fully vaccinated people, to wear masks in public indoor settings, but only in areas of substantial or high transmission rate, which our area falls into that category at the moment. And so we obviously, as a city, you know, we operate or manage a couple of these types of areas, public indoor settings. I think City Hall would count as one of them. I think, you know, a discussion around, I think, you know, it seems like we're in a middle ground somewhere because we don't know quite where we're headed with this process. And so if we're going to follow or consider CDC guidance, for example, this setting right here would be a setting where we would be seated as per usual, and we would potentially be masked sitting in the seats that we're in currently. be masked sitting in the seats that we're in currently, regardless of vaccination status. So again, this does, this treats it somewhat equitably, which I sort of appreciate what the CDC is doing here in that it's not putting targets on somebody, saying, well, obviously there's the problem, people, because they're wearing the masks, you know, where you're making unvaccinated people wear masks. Because there's a variety of reasons why people are unvaccinated. There's added information that fully vaccinated people might choose to wear masks regardless of level of transmission, particularly if they are around immunocompromised people or people that are at increased risk for severe disease. And so that's, again, that personal responsibility of saying, hey, I'm going to a place where, you know, we might have an issue, so I'm going to choose to wear a mask. And that would be a recommendation. And then there's some changes to that exposure and quarantining stuff, which I had to make myself aware of today as a tester for COVID. It's somewhat different even for vaccinated people because we're still attempting to understand in the healthcare field what the Delta variant is capable of doing. And there seems to be some different thoughts on what's happening there. And so I think it's appropriate to say there's some stuff we just don't know. And so to that end, I think the CDC is trying to help us manage that appropriately at a public level. And so I think there is discussion to be had about, even if we just take it to a place of our public indoor spaces that we manage as a city, would it be appropriate to ask people? For example, the city council meeting here today, you know, as long as we're in a high transmission status, to continue business as usual, to mayor's point, no Zoom, you know, we don't need to be, you know, limiting attendance and things of that nature, but potentially wearing a mask while we're in high transmission seems like a, they're trying to, I think they're trying to walk a line here, is what it seems like to me. But happy to hear what other people think there. But I would be in favor of masking in public indoor settings, especially when it comes to city facilities potentially, particularly if we continue in the high transmission category. Frankly, I'm somewhat surprised that we're here, but not surprised at the same time. So I'm a little bit not wanting to make a, not wanting to make a decision. It's a little discouraging that we're here, but I understand why we are, and so we have to work through it together. And yeah, I think it's a good guidance.
Any other comments? You think you have the direction from the council?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. What I would suggest is if there's interest from a council member or two to work with us, what I could do is provide a summary of the new guidance and bring forward something for your next meeting in term, to allow the council to decide if we were going to try and consistently apply that new guidance, as Mr. Ruffridge has described, what that would look like. And I could bring that back for the council to decide, either by someone indicating interest tonight or letting me know after the meeting. We'd be happy to pull that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item eight on the agenda, mayor council reports. My report this last weekend was Progress Days. It was a great event. It was good to be out there and seeing the public out and about town. I don't think the parade route was as full as it has been in the past, but it was still adequate. And like I said, people enjoyed themselves. They were able to get out. The rain held off, so we had a good time. I participated in that as the grand marshal, and that was a new experience. It was great. Then we had our little gathering at the park and at the city booth. I kind of expected we would have more kids coming over and signing up for the gifts that we gave, the bicycle and the skateboard. There wasn't, but there was still a good number. I think everyone that won a prize was happy that they received it. About four o'clock when we did the drawing, the park was a little bit empty. There wasn't too many people there. We also presented the awards to the winners of the different categories in the parade and the grand prize winner also, the best overall. There again, it was about four o'clock, and there just wasn't that many people in the park right at that moment, at least at the main area. I apologize for not making the last meeting. I came back from Florida with probably the worst cold I think I've ever had. I'm still fighting the lack of a voice, but physically, I feel much, much, much better. And I don't plan on going back to Florida again. Everyone retires there, because it's such a great place. Well, I don't think I'm going to. All right. Next on that is council reports on boards and commissions, and we have none this evening. Item nine on the agenda is city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Two quick items. One is to note, we did receive our grant agreement documents for the ARPA funds from the state. So they have issued those documents. Our finance director reviewed them. Our attorney reviewed them, and I signed those today, consistent with the resolution that the council passed authorizing me to do so. We don't have a specific timeframe on when those funds will be released, but Melanie did tell me that once we sign the documents, they'll forward them for payment. I anticipate that will happen fairly quickly, and then we'll be back with an ordinance for the council to consider appropriating those funds. The second thing I want to note is that we're going to have our surplus auction. This is where we auction off vehicles, equipment, furniture items, municipally-owned items that are of no longer of use to the city. We do this process every year. We find out first whether there's another city department where we can repurpose an item, and often that happens. But if it's an item that's no longer of need to the municipality, then we put it in an auction. We've been using for several years a website, govdeals.com. That works out really well. People like it. They can go preview the items, look at the photos. And so that auction's going to run August 16th through the 25th. And by Monday, the 9th, we should have some of those photos and descriptions posted on the website. But there's some good things in the auction, including two Crown Vics. We've got a bucket truck, a couple of graders, lawn mowers, et cetera. So oftentimes, this is a good way to get those in somebody's hands locally who can make good use of that, as well as replenishing revenue in our equipment replacement fund. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for the city manager? I do have one, a quick one. Does the police department ever do an auction or surplus items that they've had in evidence, you know, bicycles and things like that?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'll have to inquire about items. I know that at some point, there's often forfeited cash where the courts release that to go back to the department. We brought those ordinances back to the council, but I'm not sure about other items that may be held. And I can find out and get back to you on that.
Yeah, I remember at one time when I was working, we had about 200 bicycles at one time that lost, found, whatever. And that was the way to get some of them out to the kids in the community. Okay. We're now on item 10 on the agenda, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Saying done, we'll go back to the agenda. Item number 11, council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Ruffridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have much in the way of comments except for to say that the walk-in clinic at the Y has been seeing an increased vaccination series currently, which is promising, almost triple what we were doing in previous weeks. So that's good to see, and I think there's good evidence that that's mostly local people. I thought initially we'd be doing a lot of travel vaccines and such through that site, but that has not seemed to be the case. I also like to give a shout out to our Chamber of Commerce folks and the Progress Days events. Unfortunately, our weather was not very kind for many of those things. In addition to that, on that note, potentially when we move down to the park paths and things that we have in our capital improvement plan, there seems to be a spot that gets walked often that's not gravelled, and it's very easy to see where it is, especially when it's raining in the park because it's mud. We may consider making that a gravel or paved path, but yeah, it's standard Alaskan summer, but boy, did I get used to sunshine the last couple of years. But yeah, it was a good event, and I enjoyed attending many of those things. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I would like to say that there was certainly a lot of traffic this weekend because I couldn't get either in or out of my office. I had to make sure I went to a light, went through the intersection, and then came back and did a right turn. So I think it was well-attended somewhere, whether it was dip netting or in soldotnet. And I had a great time, so thanks, everybody, for everything they do. I do want to say that I certainly hope that people will go ahead and get their vaccines. In the last month and a half, I've lost two friends, and I've had four people that I know very well end up that were totally vaccinated and have got the variant. So it's out there. You can't bury your head in the sand. Thank you.
Mr. Hugarte?
I'd like to apologize for not attending last time, but like, Mayor, I had a cold, and I just wanted to make sure that it was just that and no one would else would get sick. I also appreciate being able to be part of Saturday of the Progressive Days. And as I was walking around, there were, we had quite a bunch of tourists, you know, and I was asking them, you know, how they enjoyed our town, how did they like our, you know, our city. And everyone that's come down, everyone said that it's a beautiful town. One thing that they like is the friendliness that this town has, how people are just friendly, you know? And they were saying that, you know, from where they come from, you know, people usually don't interact or they're not like it was here, and they really enjoyed themselves. So I'm just saying, we got a good town, and we're doing good, you know? And other people that come up from the Lower 48, they feel welcome when they come here by all our shops and all the stores and everybody around. So just want to say, it was a good, it was a good day, and I would second Mr. Ruffridge. And I know that area he's talking about, about the mud. And yeah, that would be maybe something, you know, because there was a lot of people, when they were walking through, you could hear a lot of people complaining. It was mostly adults that were mad because little kids were using that as a splash. So yeah, so yeah, but it was fun to see everybody enjoying themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work that the city's doing, and if you need a council member to help you on that one issue, I'd be very happy to help. Thank you to all.
Mr. Chilson?
No comments tonight.
Okay, now, moving on to item 12, executive session. We have no need for one this evening. And item 13, meeting announcements. And August 4th, 2021 is the Planning Commission meeting at 5:30 PM. August 5th, 2021, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting at 5:30 PM. And August 11th, 2021, the city council meeting at 6 PM. And I did forget to mention, I will be attending the AML and the Council of Mayors event in Fairbanks starting Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And seeing no other businesses in front of us, we are...